Good evening and welcome to the July Meeting of the ZBA. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight's decisions will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, July 25, 2025. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, July 25, 2025. The data-certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, August 10, 2025. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Now, at tonight's meeting, we will have Bob Gross, he's filling in for Bruce Conway. We'll have Bob Prentice, who's filling in for Joe Rusek, Tom Wolfher, Karen Radetz, and Raymond Rice. I'll be chairing the meeting. Madam Secretary, we have a variance for 22 South Branford Road. Do we have any correspondence? Pardon? South Branford Road? Thank you. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have staff comments that read as follows. Applicant seeks variance approval for front yard of 45 feet where 75 feet is required and 25 feet exists to construct an addition and attached garage at 22 South Branford Road in an RU-120 district. Parcel is a 10.8-acre lot with a single-family dwelling built in 1900, well predating the inception of zoning, and constructed entirely within the current required front setback. The proposed addition and attached garage are oriented to the dwelling rear and northern side, which increases the existing front setback by 20 feet, from 25 feet to 45 feet, and reduces the existing setback nonconformity. Variance is required despite this reduction as the area of the total dwelling occupying the front setback is expanding. Mr. Chairman, we also have an interdepartmental memo from the Health Department dated July or received July 3, 2025. And that's it.
Thank you. We have questions here from the panel?
Do you want them to say who they are?
What? Oh, okay, that's right. Would you state your name, address, and... Okay?
Yes, sir. My name is Paige Barney, 238 South Main Street in Wallingford. I am the sole owner of 22 North Branford Road LLC, which owns 22 South Branford Road, the applicant. The house, including a structurally unsound addition at the back of the farmhouse, was built about 1850, prior to the enactment of our current zoning regulations. The house is currently setback 25 feet, as it said. The current 25-foot setback of the farmhouse is very similar to the multiple farmhouses that were built on the east side of Wallingford throughout the 18th and 19th century. As the plan indicates, I'm hoping to renovate the 1850 farmhouse, bringing the 1850 farmhouse into the 21st century. The renovation includes adding an attached garage, rebuilding the existing addition, and adding a mudroom between the addition and the new garage. In order to do this, I am seeking a variance to permit a setback of 45 feet, new construction in the zone, which requires 75-foot setback. The hardship arises from the existing setback of the farmhouse currently is 25 feet, the topography of the property, which slopes steeply behind the farmhouse, we're unable to build on that, multiple mature trees immediately south of the farmhouse that I truly want to preserve and not remove, and the location of the current septic tank, denoted on the variance map as you have, is a location which would prevent us from doing the 75-foot setback. Practically, the attached garage and mudroom can only be built where we are proposing to build it. The addition on the design is essentially a rebuild of an existing structurally unsound part of the house. Granting the variance and permitting the construction would not alter the character of the neighborhood. The property is currently in the rural 120 zone, RU-120. This zone permits single-family residents at low density while recognizing and encouraging the continuance of agricultural operations. The proposed construction will simply bring the 1850 farmhouse into the 21st century, with grand hopes that it will be around for at least another 175 years. Additionally, there are many similarly situated properties within the RU-120 that have attached and detached garages that have similar setbacks. Granting the variance totally aligns with the Wallingford's Plan of Conservation and Development, effective June 13, 2016, the plan. The plan advocates the rural residential land uses. The plan describes rural residential land uses as large-lot residential uses in Wallingford's more rural areas that are primarily single-house family residences, including accessory buildings like garages. Finally, my vision and the designs reflect the garage and mudroom look like they've been on the property, hopefully since 1850, or not quite. Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, my name's Bob Weedman from Sunwood Development. I'm acting as consultant on the construction side.
Name and address.
I'm sorry. 1443 Durham Road, Wallingford. And I would have to say that Paige wanted me here for technical construction questions. She did a great job. I think I'm going to hire her to do my presentations from this point forward. So, I don't have anything really to add unless there are questions from the commission regarding the construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, do we have any questions here?
You mentioned the size of the lot of the land, so through to Amy, is that land subdividable?
I'd have to look further at it, but that not being what's in front of us today, so...
I understand that, but it has...
Right now, it's a single... Not where the house is, it would interfere greatly, and there's wetlands on part of the property in the rear, but that's...
But there's a structure back there now, behind... I mean, there's something behind the house. I know, I understand.
I hang out with the...
Do you know if that land's subdivitable at all to build another structure, another house or another...
Land where the...
Anywhere on your 10-acre parcel?
I don't know if it's subdivitable. I had no intention of subdividing it. I want to leave it a single-family house, as is.
So, explain... So, what you're doing is taking... I have pictures of the house, so that's why I'm going to look to ask the questions.
I'll try my best.
On the house, as I'm looking at it, from South Branford Road to the left, which would be to the...
If you're facing it.
If I'm facing your house.
Okay.
Standing, say, I'm standing in Turnberry, looking towards your house.
Yes.
On the left. You want this to go to the left of the house?
Yes, because if you go to the right, there are many mature trees to that side that you'd have to remove in order to put a garage. If you go to the back off the existing addition that's already there, that's structurally not sound that we want to replace, steep slopes, it'd be almost impossible, it'd be difficult to build on that.
But the back is used for parking now?
No.
There were cars there today?
It's because we're working on the land. We will not park back there. We don't want some of our... We have a lawnmower and other items. We don't have a garage to store it in, that we want people to... Well, for the record, don't really want people thinking no one lives there.
No, I understand.
And want them taking...
I understand that.
...near the property.
So, that comes... So, you're going to actually live in that house then, once it's done?
Yes.
Okay. Because you said it was an LLC and that, you know, you're the sole owner and you're potentially... So, because then what would be the hardship if you were built... If you weren't going to live there, there's no hardship if you weren't going to be the actual occupant of the house. That's why I was asking that question. There's always a reason. So, explain why the topography behind the house, the garage can't go behind the house?
It's very... There's a sleep stope, slope. It'd be very difficult to build on that. Bob could probably...
Yeah, I was going to say, do you know what the incline is? I didn't go back there because I didn't want to walk on your property, but...
The existing addition off the back of this building that there is now has a walkout basement, so it's about eight feet of grade change from the front yard to the back of the house, and it continues to slope down further back towards some wetlands at the back of the property.
How far are the wetlands away from this structure?
100 feet, maybe, something in that range. I have not measured.
You know, I understand. It's a ballpark. So, my concern is that with all of them, is that you're... You have an opportunity to put it behind. Now, I know it'll cost additional money to move the garage behind the house instead of on the road. And from my understanding is financial is not a hardship. So, that's... I understand. And so, the room behind the house, you're going to take it down and rebuild something there? Because you keep saying that it's structurally not sound.
Right.
Yes, that would be... That's part of the house. It's the kitchen.
Right. So, that's... And the mudroom's going to go between, but you also talk about building a family room.
Right. It would be an inclusive room that would have an area where you could sit and it'd be included in the kitchen area.
But you didn't look to build the garage behind it?
So, it just made sense because if it were setback further, and in theory, we could do that, but what would happen is we'd bring additional fill-in to extend the driveway back to that place, and then we'd... If we wanted it attached, which is their desire, would be to somehow connect the new garage to the house. They're trying to take advantage of the views out the back. It's beautiful, pictorial...
We'd have no view then of the back of the yard.
So, the goal was with their design was to come up with a way of keeping the garage accessible from the street, obviously, but also not to be directly behind the house where it would block all the views out the back of the house.
Anybody else have a question? No? Okay. Yeah, I just... I understand what you want to do, but to me, it's making a... You have a... I understand it was built before zoning, but now zoning is in place now and has been for many years, so you're building increasing... I understand you're saying you're decreasing it, but if it was behind the house, it would be further away and less of a need for a variance. I can't support the garage. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go out to the public. Is anybody here in favor of this?
You're to speak in support of it.
Yeah. Is there anybody who wants to speak against? If not, we'll bring it back up to the board here. Do we have any motions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve a variance request for a front yard of 45 feet to construct an addition and attached garage at 22 South Branford Road, as shown on subdivision property of C.O. Young &amp; Sons Incorporated, South Branford Road, dated December 10, 1996, and submitted plans received June 11, 2025. Subject to comments from the Health Department dated July 3, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes to approve.
Ms. Radetz.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rice.
Yes to approve.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a special reception... Yeah. A special exception request by Mr. Crowe at 38 Piper Drive. Do we have any correspondence, Madam Secretary? Mr. Piper, I mean, not Mr. Piper, Mr. Crowe.
How are you?
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have staff comments that read as follows. Applicant seeks total garage area of 1,464 square feet, where a maximum of 936 square feet is permitted as of right, in order to construct a 936-square-foot detached garage where a 528-square-foot attached garage exists at 38 Piper Drive in R-18 District. Applicant proposes a compliant location on the parcel to locate the detached garage in building dimensions, including height, on the proposed spec sheet from Ever Safe Buildings, which is also compliant. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to explain what you want to do, sir?
Oh, sure. So, the...
State your name and...
My name is Tom Crower. I live at 38 Piper Drive in Wallingford. I've been there for two years. And the existing garage I have now, which was built in 1970s, it's just not high enough to put my vehicles in the garage, so I want to build an additional garage in the backyard to put my vehicles in it and my antique boats.
Okay. Do we have any questions here from the panel?
Yeah, I do. How are you going to get to the backyard? What are you going to...
Excuse me?
Good morning, good afternoon. How are you going to get to the backyard?
A driveway.
So, were you going to build the driveway?
You didn't see this?
Yeah. Well, I want you to explain.
Oh, okay. So, they're going to be there Wednesday, and they're going to remove all the driveway that's been present for the past 40 years, and put the additional driveway in the backyard. And if I get the approval for the garage, then we'll go back a little bit more with the driveway.
Yeah, but you're going to go on the side of your house?
The driveway's going to be on the side of the house.
Yeah, so how close is that to the neighbors? How far over are you going to go?
We're going to go 11 feet, and we still have a 10-foot safety with the property line.
So, where the cars parked now, or you had a van there parked yesterday, that's where the driveway will be?
Yes.
And then you're going to have the garage right back there, three-car garage, though?
Correct, yes.
And this isn't... I understand you have vans, but the cars don't fit in the garage?
No, my truck, my truck...
Yeah, okay. I was going to say, the cars fit, but your vans don't fit in the garage?
Yep.
And just the three-car garage on top of the two-car garage is kind of out of character for the neighborhood.
Excuse me?
It's kind of out of character for the neighborhood having five-car garage in that area.
I'm not going to be using the garage in the house.
But it's still a five...
It's still there, yeah.
It's still a garage. It's still a two-car garage. It's still a five-cars garage, and it's... The size of the garage is pretty close to the size of the house. So, I'm questioning... I mean, I know they're allowed in the backyard, but do we see many five-car garages? I mean, if you didn't have a garage, but you have a two-car garage there.
I'll make two points of order here. Number one being that there's no setbacks for driveways, first of all, so they don't have to be a certain distance.
No, I understand.
Because it's not a structure.
I understand, but I was just wondering where it's going to go.
And the process of a special exception is something that is permitted, certain amount as of right, to get access without needing, having a hardship. However, it is based on the particulars of this lot, this neighborhood, this site. It may be different for an alternative one. That is why it's a special exception, so that's for the board to discern whether or not it's appropriate at this particular site.
Special exception is because of the size of this...
Special exception is asking for more area.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But the process of a special exception is exactly the same as it is a special permit, which means it's allowed to get more area, but it's a case-by-case basis. So, that's what you are evaluating.
But we're also... But don't we evaluate the welfare of the neighborhood, too?
I would caution you to say welfare of the neighborhood, but appropriate site, is it in keeping with what the neighborhood is?
With other houses in the neighborhood.
Is it necessary or not? Is it making the dwelling subordinate or equal to rather than primary in size? There's various things that you can evaluate in this particular instance if this is appropriate. That's what your charge is under this type of application.
Right.
Not whether or not he can have extra area, but just if it's appropriate here.
But whether it's... If it was a two-car and it went up to the 950, then he wouldn't even be here.
If it... Whatever the difference from 936 square feet is to what he's got, so, yeah, 400 and something, then that would be allowed as of right. There would be no...
So, if he had a 20 by 20 structure, that would be allowed, and he wouldn't even be here.
Correct.
That's the point I'm making, and it's just large for the area. That's... I mean, there are some big houses in your neighborhood, but not garages.
Correct.
So...
Anyone else here?
I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, is just whether you'd consider putting a smaller structure there such that you wouldn't require this variance or this special exception?
I could, but I would like the three-car because I want a workshop back there, too.
Will you be doing any commercial work there?
Oh, no, no, no. I build birdhouses and, yeah. And then I work... I have a wooden boat, so I do a lot of...
Are the birdhouses for resale?
Oh, no.
No, okay.
Would you be working on your cars in the garage then, or your boat in the garage?
In the garage, a boat I would be, yeah.
Just the boat? You don't work on your cars, then?
No, no.
Boat is sailboat or a...
It's a powerboat. It's a 1956 16-foot.
Wooden hull?
Wooden hull, yep, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions here from the panel? I just want to state one thing, that I did a survey of the entire area from the ridges all the way down to the Sharon Drive area, and there is no other structure like this in the area. I'm not... I'm a little concerned on that. I would prefer to see that be downsized, but I'm just making that statement. Now, we go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak against this? If not, we bring it up to here for action.
Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to approve a special exception request for total garage area of 1,464 square feet to construct a 936-square-foot detached garage, as shown on plot plan, lot number 42 Piper Drive, dated February 1973, and submitted plans received July 12, 2025. So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
No to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
No to approve.
Ms. Radetz.
No to approve.
And Chairman Rice.
No to approve.
Okay, thank you.
You have been denied. Our last one tonight would be number 62 Ridgeland Circle. Do we have anybody here from that? Okay. Would you come up here and identify yourselves' names and addresses?
Good evening, sir. Danielle Ruiz, 62 Ridgeland Circle, Wallingford, Connecticut.
Jonas Diaz, I'm her husband, 62 Ridgeland Circle, Wallingford.
Okay, when your people speak, make sure you speak closer to the mic.
Yes, sir.
I don't know whether it's me or not, but...
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
You're soft tonight.
Do you have something that you'd like to present to us or talk about?
You want me to read?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to read into the record the staff comments that state the following. Applicant seeks variance approval for a side yard of 4.37 feet, where 12.37 feet exists and 20 feet is required to construct an attached carport at 62 Ridgeland Circle in an R-18 District. Parcel is a compliant conforming lot, and house was constructed compliantly after the inception of zoning. At the time of construction, 1959, regulations allowed an attached garage to be constructed a minimum of five feet from side boundary, as per current regulations regarding only detached garages. The board should discern the hardship creating a nonconformity from an existing compliant lot, especially with a proposed side yard of less than five feet, which is the minimum setback for any structure, primary or accessory, in any zone. Applicant should consider detaching the 242-square-foot carport and locating it compliantly behind the dwelling where a five-foot side yard is permitted. Also, we have two pieces of correspondence. One from John Lukitis, maybe? Darlene Lukitis, am I saying that right?
Lukitis.
Lukitis, dated June 16. And the other one...
Jack Olivera.
That's probably what it says. Jack Oliveri. It's written, and I can't really read his handwriting, and that's dated June 19, 2025. Thank you.
Would you like to discuss what you want to do?
Yes, sir. So, I'll speak first. The house was built in 1959. It is on the Ridgeland Circle, right behind Sheen High School. It has become... The cart garage was built five years after the house, so it's 64. The situation that we're running into right now is that our family is growing. We have three kids. One of them is already driving. It's a single-car garage. For us, we work different schedules. We work for the state. We move in and out at different times, and now our older son with a license also has to be in and out. It's a single-car garage with a single lane. We are actually parking next to each other in order to alleviate some of it, but my wife's vehicle, it kind of blocks in and out. Solution, we have two other kids soon to have licenses also. It will become a nuisance using the single-car garage. Our solution was actually to build a carport next to it. There is a little hill, steep hill, going down to Jack Olivera's house, and it's a little wooded area. We would like to build a retaining wall there, which we haven't applied yet, pending this decision today. Jack Olivera is the one that will be building that wall, and we're going to set a carport next to the house, widening a little bit the driveway, and this would alleviate all these issues with the vehicles and give a little bit better view and structure to the line between both houses, our houses and Jack's houses.
Well, ideally, we wanted to build and, like, extend the actual garage and turn it into a two-car garage, but we know that was completely like... It would have been a lot more to do the two-car garage versus just adding a carport onto the side. We wouldn't be the only house. There is a house, a couple houses down around the corner from us that also has a carport off the side of their house, and it's unusable space, so we will be widening the driveway to make the park closer to the house, three lanes, well, like, two and a half lanes wide.
We understand that when houses were built, families didn't have as many vehicles as we have nowadays. We're looking for a solution as to how to accommodate the three vehicles we have and soon enough when the kids get older.
Also, our lot lines in that area, because we're around the circle, our lot lines go at an angle, so at the area that we would have to put a carport in the back of the house, it literally wouldn't be wide enough to fit a driveway for a car to get around the bend from where Jack's corner property pin is to where the... To drive into the garage where that would have to be.
So, the other solution for that idea, if we want to build it in the back of the garage, would be to open up the front door of the garage, open up another door in the back of the garage so we could...
Go through it.
So, we'll be able to go through it. We've thought about this a few times. It's kind of uncomfortable.
Any questions here from the panel? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, so you, I mean, you said that you could, you could go through and build a double depth garage.
Well, we couldn't because the, the town laws, it'd have to be a detached garage behind the additional gar, the garage we have now.
Why detached?
Because it's still too close to the borderline, according to your zoning plans. So couldn't it be-
Behind the house?
Behind the house.
It wouldn't have to be detached behind the house, according to the zoning line, because you guys, not you guys, but-
The laws.
The law's changed in the meantime.
So, question for Amy. Previously said that they can go five feet away with a driveway.
A detached garage is allowed to be a minimum of five feet from the property line. At the time the house was constructed, the zoning regulations in nineteen fifty-nine allowed you to have an attached garage as close as a detached garage. It doesn't, it's not so anymore. Only detached garages in the rear are permitted to be a minimum of five feet. There is twelve point three seven feet between the boundary and the furthest corner of structure, so there's certainly ample room to, to driveway could be there, because a driveway can go to your boundary, there's no setback with that. And, and it doesn't mean that it has to be five feet away, it could turn in-
Right, that's, that's the point.
It just needs to be behind the house.
That's the question I was making, because then you could put the driveway there, we don't, you don't need a variance for the driveway.
Correct.
So then they can go there and put the driveway, and then they don't need us for a variance.
And, and, correct. The same rules apply zoning-wise.
Right.
Um, to a carport versus a garage, obviously, it's less expensive to not have the walls, but I mean, you're, you're going through no, you're not lessening the zoning requirements by having no walls.
But they could put-
It's exactly the same.
So they could put the carport back there if they wanted to with the garage, with the driveway going up the side?
Correct. And widen the driveway and have it go alongside the building. That is correct.
Right, okay, so, all right.
It's an option, whether or not, you know, that's something that, but, it's an alternative option that would be compliant and not require a variance.
Because the idea is to make things compliant.
That would be a compliant option.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Now- Mr. Chairman, I have one. What are your thoughts on that second proposal that we talked about, having it to go through the front and have, I'm making it up in the back, and having the driveway on the side?
It was an option at one point. We found that as long as it's a continuance of the current garage, it's attached, it is still a non-compliance because it'll be too close to the line.
I think you asked about detached, though.
The detached one?
Detached behind it.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, that's the one you proposed? I guess it's a possibility, we would have to restructure the garage, open up a second door in the back, and have the detached all the way in the back of the property. It was an option. The problem, I guess, with that is the, the traffic, the in, the constant in and out between college, between work, between the other kids' schools. It's the constant traffic of moving one vehicle to replace the other that we're trying to kind of maneuver around that.
It's also driving on it.
But we're talking about putting a driveway on side of your garage that you have now and go in the back.
Right, we have to build a retaining wall, and the retaining wall-
But you would build a retaining wall for the carport either way.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
So that's what I'm talking about, if you built the garage, the driveway will take you to the back.
To the back.
And that will give you a access, multiple cars, they'd be, sorry, you could park them side by side.
That is an alternative that we would have to discuss with Jack, who's our neighbor and the builder, to extend and prolong that retaining wall, almost touching his line all the way in the back in order to give us a better curve to access the back of the garage. So that is an option.
His fences on the, on that line where that would have to go.
I, I'd have to see the line, your drawings, if you were to go back there, but it's, it's an option.
If I may make a point of order, if you did the driveway, the width of where the proposed attached carport is now, it's, it doesn't require a foundation, it doesn't have walls, it could just be continued, there's ample space to continue it around. It doesn't have to be level with the side, you could turn in and you also, as of right, have about five hundred and fifty square feet of garage area as of right, so you wouldn't be limited to two hundred and forty square feet of a carport. You could have a two-car carport by doing that.
All the way in the back.
It doesn't have to be all the way in the back, it has to be behind the foundation line, furthest foundation of the house. It could be one inch behind it.
So, part of our thing was we have an extended sunroom off the back of the house?
It, it would be, have to be behind that.
No, correct. So then that puts it out three hundred, that attached sunroom that's on that jigs out a little bit, is like three hundred and something square feet, so it'd have to be behind that, which then makes it a lot farther, and the property line comes in a lot more.
I, I have your map, I see your property line, you have ample way to, and it doesn't have to be located near that property line. My suggestion is we would just, and whether or not it's feasible and how expensive it is, I'm, I'm just throwing ideas out there. In other words, if you were to do something compliant and not have to be here, that you are entitled to. If the driveway were to go around, and I see there's an existing metal gazebo on a deck, for example, it's built right behind there, you could turn right into the face of the garage. You don't have to have the garage right up on the line, the driveway could. So, for, for example, in other words, a driveway doesn't require a retaining wall. And if there's ample passage for a ten-foot wide carport, there's certainly ample passage for a twelve-foot wide driveway. And, and it wouldn't encumber, and you could avail yourself, again, notwithstanding the costs, of more garage area, thinking our kids that have to have their own cars, like I have. So, we, uh, that, there's room again for the next one. So, without stacking them in a driveway and having to move folks around, you know, to want to get out and comings and goings, it's, it's a suggestion which says, which is the staff, the office's job, if there is something compliant you are, could do, and you're choosing something that is non-compliant, then it opens the door whether there's a hardship or it's a choice. That, that's all, the, that's the only reason such is suggested.
Are there any other questions from this panel? We'll go to the audience. Is there anybody out in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this? If not, is there anyone who wants to speak against it? We'll bring this back up to the panel for action.
Uh, Mr. Mo, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve a variance request for a side yard of four point three seven feet to construct an attached carport at sixty-two Ridgeland Circle in an R eighteen district, as shown on proposed plot land of Danielle Ruiz, sixty-two Ridgeland Circle, dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and submitted plans received June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
No to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
No to approve.
Ms. Raditz.
No to approve.
And Chairman Rice.
No to approve. Failed.
But, Mr. Chairman, point of order, if I may suggest to the, to the applicants, if you would like to make an appointment at the office, we can show you what you can do and work with you, where you don't need to be here. And if you'd like to pursue that, we'll be happy to help you.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June? Have you read them?
Mr. Mo, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, me being absent last month, I don't feel that I'm qualified to make a motion to approve or disapprove. Maybe somebody else can.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe our business is concluded, and we have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.[1715.21]